I'd like to call this March 17th meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to order, and Mr. Johnson will give the invocation.
Let's pray, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you with a grateful heart this evening. We're thankful that we have a full board tonight. And Father, let me just say that we just pray that your will be done, Father, and that you'll give us the faith. Sometimes, Father, we don't understand why things happen, but we express our faith to you this evening and our praise. We know that whatever happens is for our eternal good and for your glory, and we pray for that. And we pray for this county this evening. Folks, there's a lot of folks across this county hurting. We pray that you'll give leaders in every area of government wisdom to make the right decisions, that the people will be blessed, and that you'll be glorified, and we ask it in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have in our audience tonight a very special guest, Little Ken, for most of us, but now I'd like to introduce Cadet Kenneth Robinson III, who is visiting us from West Point El Terrari Academy tonight. We appreciate that you would stand, and thank you so much for being here with us. Mr. Mashburn, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Just one, Mr. Chairman. Under item F, we'd like to delete the second item, which is the appropriation of $2,597.16, and that item is to be deleted. Those are all the adjustments I have to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mashburn. Mr. Smith, we have a public hearing. Would you like to go ahead and inform us of that, please?
Actually, I think that's Mr. Garrison's.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was...
It's okay.
Mr. Garrison. Can't see through the blinders tonight.
Good evening. Annually, we in transportation apply for funding through the NC DOT for administrative and capital needs, and as required, as a part of that application process is that we hold a public hearing, that we advertise and hold a public hearing to allow citizen input into that application process. Also required with that application is a resolution that's adopted by the county commissioners that authorizes me as the transportation director for the county to make that application. The public hearing notice was published in the Sunday, March 1st record landmark, and with meeting requirements, it was published in both English and Spanish versions. Also, the hearing notice was published or placed on vans or in strategic locations where people would have access to it. There's been no one to contact me regarding the notice or requesting to speak or appear at this public hearing. The deadline for the application is March 31st, which is a couple weeks away. This application this year contains the following request: administrative funds is $264,203. That's 80% federal money, 5% state, and 15% local. That money is used for administrative salaries, vehicle insurance, and a whole host of allowable costs for DOT. Under capital, our request this year is $196,900. 90% of that is state, 10% is local. The request this year is to replace four vehicles that have met their life for replacement and to replace two desktop computers that are the 2003 three variety that are not quite up to par with our needs for our technology that we put in. We get our local match for these grants from mileage surcharges and user fares. The application will be reviewed by the Board of Transportation in May, and we'll know then what their approval will be. Just for information, I wanted to let you know what we've been doing in transit. For the first six months of this fiscal year, we've provided 59,398 passenger trips. We've traveled 422,127 miles. We've provided 23,981 service hours, and we've operated 159 days. I think one thing that we're starting to see now with some of the technology that we've put in with the automatic vehicle locators and mobile data computers is it's allowing us to transport more passengers, but we're seeing some decrease in our service miles, which is good for us. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Goddard, any questions? Mr. Garrison?
I've got one, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Garrison, seems to be a lot of confusion in Raleigh as to what's going to happen. Are you getting any mixed signals about your request may be amended, or you feel pretty confident this money's going to be available to you?
This money, probably so. What I'm more concerned about is the rope money, the rural operating assistance money, which is, that's all state money, and I'm concerned about that. What I'm also doing right now is working on some additional federal grants. Like, we just did one, hopefully, to transport dialysis patients, and we're looking at doing a job access grant to help people access the community college. We're trying to look at some other types of funding that might offset, but that's going to be a big question. I don't know how all this stimulus money's going to affect transit either, because there seems to be quite a bit of money going in, that's going to go into rural transit, but most of that's going to be for capital-type needs, so...
As far as this presentation making tonight, though, you feel pretty confident, these are pretty hard numbers, then?
Yeah, I feel this is pretty much in line with what we've always done, and a lot of it is federal.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Garrison. I now declare this meeting to be in a public hearing to consider the FY 2009, 2010 North Carolina Department of Transportation application for the Community Transportation Program. If anyone here would like to speak in favor or against, please come to the microphone and state your name. Now declare the meeting, public hearing closed. Is any other discussion, or would someone like to make a motion this time?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we adopt this resolution. I don't think it's necessary for me to read it, is it?
No.
Okay.
Okay, motion's been made. Mr. Johnson, we adopt this resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Like? Sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Mr. Mashburn, could you read the consent agenda, please?
Mr. Chairman, the following items are on consent agenda. Item A is approval of the fiscal year 2010 Criminal Justice Partnership Program budget. Item B is approval of the February 2009 refunds and releases. Item C is approval of a business personal property discovery contract with tax management associates and authorization for a signature. Item D is to add a section of Article 6, 7, sorry, Article 6 of the Iredell County Farmland Protection Plan. Addition will be scheduled for the plan's implementation. Update from the Planning and Development Office regarding the 1997 and 2008 eight-hour ozone standard, and that one was not put on consent agenda, so you will have discussion of that tonight. Under F, you do have, under a consent agenda, the first part of that, the appropriation of $350,000 to the Cool Springs Volunteer Fire Department for the purchase of a service truck, a used fire engine, and equipment for both vehicles. Item G is request for approval of budget amendment 49 to allocate women, infants, and children or wick grant revenue of $7,421 for the establishment of a nutritionist position for the remainder of FY 08, 09. Item H is not on consent agenda. Item I is request for approval of public facilities agreement with Providencia USA. Item J is request from the Trinity Volunteer Fire Department for the waiver of solid waste tipping fees resulting from the demolition of a structure on property owned by the volunteer fire department. Item K is request for approval of the, I'm sorry, that one was not put on consent agenda. Item K was not on consent agenda. Item L is request from the Sheriff's Department for approval to apply for a North Carolina Highway Safety Program grant with the funding to be used for the creation of four traffic officer positions along with necessary equipment, vehicles, and with the local match to be derived from seized funds. Item M is to approve a request from the Sheriff's Department to allow the sale of a service sidearm and award of an employment badge to retiring Deputy James G. Craven. And item N is approval of the February 27 and 28, 2009 winter planning session minutes and the March 3, 2009 minutes of the regular county commissioners' meeting, and that is with the corrections and revisions that were made during the consent agenda briefing. Mr. Chairman, those are the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Mashburn. Is there a motion we approve the consent agenda?
Motion, Mr. Chair.
It's been made to accept the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Like? Sign. Motion carries five zero. Now... I knew I'd get around to you somewhere. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Our department has been working recently with several agencies, including the Central Island Council of Government, to kind of make our way through some changes in our non-attainments, proposed changes in our non-attainment status. We've been dealing with 1997 eight-hour ozone standards for several years now, and there's been, there are new standards, which are called the 2008 eight-hour ozone standards as well. Those are pretty significant in that we could see some potential changes in our non-attainment boundary. That's up in the air at this point. The state is recommending that our current boundary of Cottle Creek and Davidson Townships only remain as is. However, the EPA is looking at the entire county. As we've worked through this, we've seen the need to reach out to other agencies to do a couple of things. One is to educate them, and one is to use their resources to disseminate information. Deener, North Carolina Deener, has sent out letters to local industries giving a caution flag of saying that non-attainment boundaries could change, and things are up in the air as far as our status, and we've tried to work with local agencies to discuss that and give them some guidance. So what we're proposing tonight, or what we're requesting, is that we be allowed to more or less formalize a pretty casual working relationship with some of our local agencies, such as the Chambers, of the other local municipalities, the school system, the EDCs, agencies such as that, to give them information as we receive it, and also, again, use their resources to disseminate information to their clients, their, you know, their partners and things of that nature. So as we go through this process, which is very cumbersome, to say the least, we can at least be getting the word out and broadening our base to say that we're, you know, working towards coming into attainment in Iredell County. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Mr. Smith?
This group that you're wanting to put together, we discussed this in our 5 o'clock pre-agenda meeting, but pretty much, I mean, this advisory or this committee or group that you would like to put together will have no authority, really, to change any behavior in Iredell County, correct?
That's true.
And this board does not, you know, in order to reduce the ozone output that occurs in the county or around the county, we really have no authority to tell people to turn off either equipment in their plants, nor the ability to tell people that they went, if they can drive or when they can drive their automobiles, correct?
That's true. There are certain measures that can be taken from the counties, from the county level, but, you know, some of those are pretty difficult and would require partnerships with DOT and things of that nature. So by and large, the authority is not really with us, no.
Okay. Does this committee have an objective statement or a mission statement yet, or is that still in the works?
No, there is none at this point. To be honest with you, what I have so far is a list of potential agency candidates, not even specific people. Basically, again, contacts that I deal with and that my staff deals with on a pretty continual basis.
Okay.
I know this may be a little bit far out, but is doing something like organizing this committee or advisory board or whatever, is that in any way, will that be looked at as, possibly down the road somewhere, when the decision is being made, that we're at least trying something?
Potentially so, potentially so. One good thing is that, you know, we're working with COG now from a staff level to identify certain stopgap measures, so to speak, that we could put in place to help decrease our impact on ozone and air quality. This group I would see as being a good sounding board. What would work in Iredell County? You know, other than just coming from Ron Smith and, you know, Ben Stike Leather's perspective, what do you in the industry feel would be beneficial, and could this take place? And then potentially come back to this board with a recommendation. So this working group could, you know, especially long-term, have some effect on change.
Mr. Smith, when you obviously thought about putting together a group like this, you had to have, you know, a reason for wanting to do this. Could you go into a little bit of detail based on what the information you gave us, the negatives and positives of having it versus not having it?
Well, it's such a monumental issue. If we don't do it, I don't know what the ramifications would be. I don't know that this particular group is going to bring us. I know that they're not going to bring us out of this. I could probably focus more on the benefits, saying that, you know, 10 minds are better than one, and that we could collectively look at things, get a different perspective again. You know, the Chambers of Commerce are going to be an excellent tool, not only to give us their industrial or business perspective, but to turn around and get information out, if needed, to their, you know, influenced group. So I don't know that I could really say that if we don't do this, that we'd be falling behind, but we definitely, it couldn't hurt.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, sir. Mr. Smith, the Central Island Council of Government, and I'm reading here, it says, has formed a working group, and they will research options that should be the most effective policies. I'm reading from your memo, and you want to continue reading, recommend forming a local working group to explore these options. Have they come up with any options already?
They have. There is a laundry list of potentials, and they go from decreasing the speed limits on certain roads to modifying your fleet to take, you know, alternative fuels. So we, and specifically Ben and Steve from my staff, have kind of been put in the situation of, well, what is going to work for us, what's going to work for Iredell County, and what can we therefore take back to the COG, which is kind of a difficult situation from a staffer's perspective. So yes, they've given us some options, many, many of which are not reasonable for this county.
Thank you. So what are we doing, just giving him a, are we voting to give him the, our approval to go ahead and start to come up with a charter for this advisory committee and a recommendation for its makeup? I mean, that's about all we're doing, because you don't have a mission statement yet, clearly defined takeaway points, nor a recommended composition. So we're just, given you are okay to take the next step?
That's what I was looking for, and by design, I kind of wanted to keep this informal, because I didn't know if you wanted to specifically appoint individuals to do this. My idea was that we would pull from the people we're used to dealing with, the Mike Smiths and Russ Rogersons of the world that have a hand in the pot every day, and make it a fairly informal group.
Okay. So does it require a formal motion?
Well, one thing I will say is, I wanted to make sure that you were on board before we started, you know, talking in earnest about these issues, because, you know, things such as this will cross your desks and will have some impact on you.
You want to go? My only concern, Mr. Smith, is just that I think sometimes the folks at the Central Island, you know, Council of Government, some of the other folks that get involved in these kind of things, don't seem to have the mindset of the people of Iredell County and as reflected in this board here. I think sometimes people forget that there's a recession on, and they want to work on the deck furniture while the ship is sinking. And so I guess I would be concerned if we did, you know, have a group that's going to bring us a recommendation, that that group be somebody that we appointed here since, you know, we were at the ballot box, and it reflect the thoughts and values of the people of Iredell County. I guess that was more a speech than a question. My apologies, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I concur with what Mr. Caddell just said. I just want to clear up there, I can't help myself, Mr. Smith, from having a little reality check here. Just so everybody know, the air is getting cleaner. It is not getting dirtier, okay? The problem is, every time the air gets cleaner, they raise the standards of what constitutes clean air, okay? So I'll go so far as say this, because I doubt that many people are going to read this, who, I doubt the chief of the EPA is going to read this. In my opinion, you're largely dealing with irrational people at some point, who think they're going to create an environmental utopia when that's not possible. But I share the concern of Mr. Caddell in this, that this board of recommendations should not wander too far from what you've recommended of its composition. If it does, you're going to get into the situation where people have specific agendas. I don't mean to pick on anybody, have a hydrogen chain, a train that's going to save us all from collective suffocation, and that's not going to happen, and that's not going to prevent it from happening. So I think you need to get involved with people who deal in reality, who are trying to create economic opportunities for our people here, such as the Development Corporation and the Chambers and so forth, and let the majority of the, well, I'd say the total composition of this board of recommendation would come from that group of people. There are two aspects to this thing. There is the regulatory aspect, and I think that this would go away some ways toward at least buying you time in placating regulatory authorities, that you can demonstrate and you have some ethical standing in front of them when you say, at least we're trying something. I said for a long time, being a county commissioner is much like the fly on the axle of a bee sop's chariot, oh, what a dust we do raise. Just sometimes we raise a lot of dust, but we're not accomplishing the whole thing, a whole lot. There is the part of it that is out of your area of expertise, and that is the political aspect, because I go back a few years in which, Mr. Mashburn, we were making a trip to Washington, and Mr. Mashburn, at the last minute, we were making a trip for the airport, and he handed me some, handout material to our congressional delegation dealing with the non-attainment. I believe it was 2003, and we got great assistance from our congressional delegation in holding that back. The political reality is, nobody in elective office wants to be remembered as that person who prevented someone in Iredell County from getting a job or locating a factory, or because of some regulation that they voted for prohibited a new highway from being built. So I think it's imperative that if you will limit the scope of your recommendations as far as the people along that line of ideology, then I think we'll try to deal with the political aspect and those people who will eventually be voting for some of this, notwithstanding the fact that a lot of the people's political ideology in Washington is no longer congruent with mine or probably the majority of this board, but nevertheless, that's the hand we're dealt.
We have, remember the audience that would like to speak to this, Jerry? If it's a consensus of the board, would you let him have two minutes?
Sure.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I served on the Airworks Commission in Charlotte and worked with Dr. John Aipin, who is with Harris Teeter American Efe, and as a result of that, we worked with Elizabeth Romano, who is an offshoot of Airworks, and put together a program where we engaged the Chambers in the region, and Karen Shore from Mooresville, Elise from Gaston, Danny Hearn from Katava, and several others, came together and discussed it. As a result of that, we were charged by the commission in Gaston to put together a task force to study what we could do for Gaston County, and we worked through the Chamber, what we call the Manufacturers Roundtable, and that group came together, owners of business or presidents or whatever their titles were, and we met with them. There were 22 managers, owners, came to the table, and we talked about air quality and how effective it would be in their industry. And Dr. Aipin explained that, and Don Parrish from National Gypson, who is in Mount Holly, explained to the managers what we had gone through and what the process would be. And we took that, and Elizabeth Romano visited the industry that we've talked to, and they set up quality... set up quality teams, air quality teams, and they come up with ways to reduce the air in their plants, like riding together, air quality idling policies and things. And we also presented an air quality policy to the county commissioners they asked for, so they could reduce emission in a county vehicle. So I think there's a good offshoot from this. And you have the authority, and you should have the responsibility of pointing those people to it, and we'd be more than happy to support you.
Jerry, for the record, would you state your name, please?
I'm sorry, I should have. Jerry Campbell, 1928, Wexford Court, Gastonia, North Carolina. Thank you.
Okay. Heard the arguments, any other comments, or this time? Not, Chair entertains a motion.
I guess the motion is to, is to authorize the planning department to proceed with putting together a, we'll call it an air quality committee, and, and then to come up with a, with a charter and a recommended organization.
All right, you've heard the motion. Is any other discussion?
I'll offer an amendment to the, to the motion, that, that board, the membership of that board, and its stated purpose be approved by this board.
Would you amend your motion to that, so we don't have to look at it one time?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
So Mr. Smith will make recommendations, and we'll approve them?
And we'll approve them before they fill the committee.
Okay.
To, to include what's the scope and the objective of the committee.
Okay.
Motion has been made. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
P o's like sign, motion carries five to zero.
Mr. Chairman, just for some clarification now, the way I understand what you just did, you did, in essence, create a committee. And that has been charged by this board to achieve certain functions. And that being the case, Mr. Smith, this will be a, a committee that would have to adhere to the open meetings laws, and public records and so forth. So, you know, as far as having your meetings, and advertising, and all of that, just, at first, we were talking about something informal that probably would not have fallen under that, but since it's been established by the board now, that you would need to fall into that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next item, a question from the Health Department for approval of septic pump inspection fee for effective, $120 effective April 1st. Hey, Don.
Hello, good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm here tonight to request approval to implement a septic pump inspection fee. Septic pump inspections are required by law, and they, for the septic pump to be formed every, performed every three to five years, based on the type of pump system. And we have not performed these inspections in the past, due to the extensive backlogs that we've had, and, and the heavy workloads. With this period of decreased demand for well and septic permits, we find it's a good opportunity to go ahead and work towards implementing this required inspection. And staff have worked really hard to get the information, the background information in place to begin this program. We have currently identified about 4,500 pump systems that need to have an inspection, and what we would anticipate would be being able to do 1,100 a year. And we would request that we, a $120 fee for this service. And we hope that we would be able to identify any malfunctioning systems, and also this would help us to be in compliance with our accreditation benchmarks also. And the Board of Health did approve this on February 26th.
Ms. Campbell, that's $4,500, 4,500 pump
Systems.
Stations at this point. Are they basically located all over the county, or where, where are they generally located?
They are located throughout the county, but there is a, a preponderance of them in the southern end of the county. And David Hinson may have more direct information about that. But you find pump systems having to be in place around, you'll find more around the lake, where there's larger houses and smaller lots, those type situations.
How did you come up with the, the $120 fee that this associated with, with going out and making the inspection?
When we
And what all would it involve?
When we looked at this, we felt this would most closely mirror our existing systems inspection, in which they go out and, and find out the lay of the, the drain field, and, and then look at the, they'll be looking at the actual pump system. And so we felt like that would be comparable to that. And we charge 120 for that existing system inspection, so we felt like it would be appropriate to charge 120 for this inspection.
And, and possibly David can answer this, if it's, if it's all right. If David, what would, what would they be, what would the inspectors actually be doing? If you could be a little bit more specific. And, and why is this a good thing for, why is, you know, why is it that, that this has been made a requirement?
Uh, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Presently, we've identified about 3,600 of these systems in the southern end of the county. We have some legal obligations that are established in the 1900 sewage rules, and specifically 1961, requires the local health department to make a site visit and review these systems, either on a three-year or a five-year inspection frequency, depending on the specifics of the system. If it's a simple pump system, it's once every five years. If it's a system with low pressure distribution, it's once every three years. We feel, first, that we should try to meet our legal obligations, because we also feel there are potential repercussions from a legal standpoint, if we don't do that. Because, so, there's a certain number of these systems that obviously would be having some problems. So I'm quite certain that maybe five to 10% would be, experience some problems where we'd have sewage on the surface of the ground. So not only from a legal standpoint, but it's good public health that we try to address this. We've already investigated some complaints where neighborhood children have gone into areas where systems have malfunctioned, because some of these systems are actually offsite in septic field easements, which is, in the past, been a very popular way for developers to try to address some of the constraints that they will run into sometimes in developing a subdivision, where they may have unsuitable soils on site, and they create a series of septic field easements. Not all of these systems are in septic field easements, but some of them are, and others are on site. But we feel that it's important that we not only try to identify those that are currently experiencing problems, but we can also make recommendations to the homeowners on how to prevent problems. And the things that we'll be looking for are certain components that we would expect to be accessible, like pump tank risers, electrical components like Nema Forex box, where, or control panel, where you have your controls that are accessible. There are certain other things, like standpipes or valve covers. We would observe to see if there's any evidence of a malfunction, where we actually have sewage on the surface of the ground. And any other things that can affect the long-term functioning of that system. Simple things like landscaping. Maybe people don't realize that they should try to establish ground cover over the drain field, like grass, and not mulch it, and also to keep that mowed. That's something that, over a period of time, will affect how that system functions, and whether or not it may prematurely fail.
Thank you.
Is it true this $120 fee more or less offsets the actual cost to provide this service?
That's what we believe. We'll have, once we have more experience actually providing the service, then we would have more information about time, and exactly how long. But it's been our past experience with the existing system inspections, that it would, that that should cover it. And so that's what we would believe would be appropriate starting place.
And it's also fair to say that since the downturn in building, you're probably not going to have to hire people to do this. We already have people on staff to do this.
Yes, sir.
Do you see that if, that if we, if we start this program, and, and if the economy or the building industry were to turn around, that, that these same inspectors would just, we're not going to hire more folks, we'll just take these same inspectors and prioritize their workload to go back to approving on-site wastewater?
If that's the directive of the Commissioners, we've been directed to self-support, and if, and, you know, we would come back and ask you, if you, if we needed additional staff, then they would come back to you for your guidance. Right now, we are cross-training, we are moving people in between food and lodging, and onsite water protection, to try to best utilize these trained staff members. Food and lodging inspections have not slowed down, they've been very busy. We see this as a good way to use our staff, and to go ahead and, and deal with the situation that we've not been able to deal with previously. So it would not be our intent to add additional staff. We would try to look at how we can best use our existing staff members, and then only if we were able to provide appropriate revenues to cover it, will we come back and ask for additional staff.
Because it seems like this is the kind of work that, that unlike, you know, if somebody has a, gets a building permit, they want to, you know, they bought a lot, they want to build a house, they want to be able to do it without huge delays. And I know that, that, that we've gone to great lengths trying to make sure that we had the, the correct number of trained staff to be able to handle those requests in a timely manner.
Yes.
You know, as opposed to, we'll get to it when we can. This, this type of program, when, if you say, we'll get to it when we can, that's, that's acceptable, and, I mean, it sounds like we have great leeway, it's not a, it's not a life or death, if, if you don't do it at a certain time period, that there's some sort of immediate ramification. Unlike a property owner who might buy a lot, and there are big ramifications, if he has to wait for six months to, to get his, his site plan approved or inspected, for something like this, if it got delayed out, you know, it's
Certainly, permits would be a priority. And certainly, if someone needed a well, or, you know, or had a well failure, and had to have a new well, you know, you have to prioritize those things.
And this would be last priority?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
If you have 4,500 of these, and you're going to do 1,100 a year, and you got to do them every three to five years, about the first, about the time you finish your first cycle of the 4,500, you're compelled by law to go back and start on the ones that you did in the first year.
Right.
So it, it never goes away.
Correct.
I mean, I wasn't real crazy about that well inspection. I re, you know, I voted for that resolution to keep from hurting y'all's feelings, but I thought it was a stupid idea. I mean...
Speak your mind, Steve.
Well, that crowd in Raleigh, if they can't tax it, they'll regulate it. And I just think it's, I get calls from time to time, I called Mr. Hinson the other day, somebody complaining about a septic tank. I don't, you know, it's not hard to tell folks when a septic tank's failing. It stinks. If it's not stinking, leave it alone. I know you're compelled by law, and I don't mean to give you folks a hard time, y'all. I know y'all compelled by law to do certain things. My problem is, you got a guy sitting down in Mountmore, and everything's happy, and he's sitting there eating supper, and he checks the mail, and he gets a notice from the Health Department, bam, here comes the government taking another $120 of his hard-earned money. I mean, is there no end to this? That's my complaint. Lord have mercy, what are people going to live on someday? Okay. I'll stop for the time being, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. I just ask that we either have a motion or move on with the agenda.
No other questions?
I think these folks are wanting some guidance. I mean, if I understand it correctly, 1,100 of these per year is $132,000, and I think they've got that incorporated into their budget so far this year. If, if we're not going to tell them to go ahead and do it, then they're going to need some guidance as to what they're going to do on their budget. We just created a $132,000 hole in their budget.
And, and, and I'll, you know, if, if they're not going to get the fee to do it, then we need to tell them, don't do it. Okay? That, that's the, if you're not going to do, if we're not, if you can't get the fee for the inspections, we need to be the ones that say, don't do the inspections. And then also, we've got two people that aren't inspecting new home construction, that are probably going to have to go away, and they need to know that that's, that we understand that's the consequence.
Well, I, I shared this with them earlier, and I've expressed this concern before, that, you know, the folks in inspections and the folks in environmental health are two groups of people that are difficult to do away with. Because if there's, if you do away with some of them, and the economy turns back up, then it's 12 to 15 months, what I'm hearing, before you get one of these folks trained back up, so that you can turn them loose and go out into the field on their own. So we ought to have some degree of reluctance to do that. You know, my only problem is, you know, I talked to a gentleman, two years ago, he was doing six septic tanks a month. Hasn't done one since September. And I had one gentleman who, who owes me a fairly substantial amount of money, and he tries to pay his best he can, but this thing just, this downturn whacked him quick. He offered to let me use his backhoe, rent it out, and whatever rent I got, pay his bill off with it. I mean, these guys are really hurting. And now, we're going to face with a situation where, to keep folks working environmental health, we're going to have to increasingly raise fees. Now, Ms. Campbell, as, as far as the number of septic permits, is that number trending down? Has it stabilized? Is it trending up? Or can you offer an opinion on that?
It has been down, and at this point, we're not seeing an increase. We are, we may see one, David, you want to speak to that?
It wouldn't be unusual to see a pickup in the spring. We've seen that before, but I would be hesitant to try to predict anything, because in these times, I think that would be a foolish thing to do.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Mashburn. This is another question from a new member, and I apologize, but, and I think I know the answer, but is, is there a way to reduce mid-year, for instance, the property tax? There's not a way to do that. So if we increase this tax, this $120 in, in the Health Department, then we have grown the government, at least for the remainder of this year, by whatever the numbers come up to, $132,000 a year. And there's no way to abate that growth in revenue, is that correct?
There's, there's no way for you to abate it by changing the tax rate. The, the revenue has been abated because revenue is down in sales tax, it's down in property tax, and so forth. So it is down, but you can't abate it by changing the property tax rate, if that's your question?
It is, and I, I guess I disagree with the notion that the, that it's been abated already, because as a, as a percentage of what people are earning, or as their property values and these sort of values and these sort of things, it, the, the size of government may in fact be up, and I think it probably is. So, you know, my concern, and I understand, you know, what Mr. Robertson's saying, and there is a case to be made for a fee-based situation here. And I don't have a problem with changing the, the way that we tax people to a fee-based situation in this case, where people are using something and then they want to, and then we want to tax those people who are using that service. I understand that. But at the same time, we have grown the government. And so if we don't un-grown the government, then we've just grown the government, and we haven't done anything to, to, to keep the size and scope of, of the government the same. And so that's my concern. And I don't think there's any way to do anything about that until the next tax year.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Oh, go ahead. If you were going to make a motion...
I just sat it up.
Oh, then, Mr. Chairman, not hearing a motion, I would move that we move along.
That, that's feeling the board?
Let, let's, Chairman, I'll make a motion. I make a motion to leave the fee rate and schedule the same.
Repeat that.
Make a motion to leave the fee schedule and rate the same that we had before we talked about the hundred and twenty dollars.
I'm not sure I understand. Are you saying that, that we, that they, are we telling them to, to, to do the inspections and charge the hundred and twenty dollars as she has budgeted?
No.
No, you're telling them, don't charge the hundred and twenty dollars?
I don't charge the hundred and twenty dollars.
And, and don't do the inspections?
Don't do the inspections.
Okay. Motion to do...
What, now she's got two people that now don't have money to pay?
I can't help that. I'm just telling you.
Okay.
My motion is that we do not charge the hundred and twenty dollars.
It's now the time to ask just a clarification before you vote?
Sure.
So are we still expected that environmental health will self-support? And if we don't have enough revenues coming in to support environmental health, then we would look at whatever reductions, including reduction in staff, to, to, for our revenues to fully support environmental health? And there's no expectation that clinical services or other divisions would support environmental health. We're looking at that as a separate entity. Is, is my understanding correct?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. I, I believe that's certainly relevant and a good question for the board, but I don't believe it's relevant to this motion.
Well, I think it is. And the reason I think it is, is because the hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars is in our budget. The budget that they're going to recommend to the county manager at some point, subsequently this board. So if we, we're telling these folks that we're not going to do this, again, we've knocked a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar hole in their budget. And they're asking for some guidance on how do you fill that hole? Do you, do you tell two people in environmental health that we don't need them anymore? Or are you going to take, are you going to riff some other employees in clinical services or whatever to make up for the shortfall in, in this? That's a policy decision. And...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I agree with that. I think, I think they deserve that guidance, and we should give it to them. I just don't think it's relevant to the question that's before us right this minute.
The motion's been made to deny the health department request for approval of septic pump inspection fees of a hundred and twenty dollars effective April the first. All those in favor of this motion to deny, say aye.
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 Pose like sign. Aye. Okay, motion fail of...
Not carried.
Carried.
Carried, yeah. Carried to deny. All right.
Chair Williams, but the nays were yours and Mr. Robertson. Is that correct?
Okay, all right. I just, no, I couldn't hear who was over there voting.
I didn't hear Mr.
All right. The motion carries three, two. Okay, do we want to make a subsequent motion concerning some of Donna's issues at this time?
I think we owe it to these folks to give them some direction. I, I don't draw any satisfaction from doing this. Because, you know, I've been fired from a job myself. I must tell you, I've worked for myself all my life. I had one job and I got fired from.
Could I add to that in your consideration, and we'll certainly do whatever the directive is, we are experiencing increases in demand for some of our clinical services due to the economic downturn. And with that, we do have sliding-scale fees. But with people making less money, that means less revenue in the clinical areas. So to ask us, we need guidance. So if we have to balance environmental health on the back of the clinical services, it gets extremely difficult. And we have to make difficult decisions, because these are difficult times. And I just want to be in line with what you all are directing us to do. And I have a board meeting coming up soon, and I'd like to be able to give them some good directives.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was going to say that, you know, since the shortfall of revenue, it, it has been the policy this board, as much as possible, to make environmental health self-funding. And that means you hire more people when times are good. I know several times since I've been on the board, we've increased salaries so that we could attract more folks. We've appropriated more money to hire more folks. And folks, it's just, it's tough economic times, and if we're going to do it when times are good and hire more people, we're just going to have to accept responsibility that we may have to let some people go when it down, turns down. And I, I don't think that it's fair and honestly to Ms. Camel and her staff and the Board of Health to ask her to, to balance the budget of environmental health off the backs of other departments in the health department. I think any cost savings should come from environmental health. And I don't draw any pleasure from saying that. I, I know that's real-world impact on real people's jobs. Somebody, you know, this is just one of those night folks, you pay the cost to be the boss.
It's fair to say that, that she has some ideas of some shifting of personnel that she would like to do. Is this what I'm hearing, Donna?
We've already unfunded four positions in environmental health, and we've shifted two-point-five FTEs to food and lodging. We had a study by the state, and it, because it showed that our need was there. So we've, and we've also cross-trained all of our staff. What we are to the point now is that if we have to make these decisions to decrease, we will be looking at positions. And we'll have to go back and crunch the real numbers, but it, it could be in excess of two people, maybe two-point-five, two-point-six.
When you said you moved people to food and lodging, the food and lodging fees are set, set by the state, and they don't cover the cost.
That's correct.
So when you moved people from, from theoretically being in a self-funded department into one that's not self-funded, that was two and a half people that, that got, in essence, the county was responsible for their salaries. And, and now, you know, okay, well...
All right, then. That's, wish the board, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item K, request for approval of the Parks Recreation Comprehensive Master Plan. Woody, you still there? There you are, okay.
Good evening. Um, I'm not exactly sure how much of this you want me to go over, but I will give you a brief overview of where we've come from and where we're at right now on the Iredell County Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The Iredell County Parks and Recreation Department started in nineteen seventy-seven. That's when our first comprehensive master plan was created. And that was done jointly with the city of state. Earlier last year, this board commissioned my department to create a new and updated comprehensive master plan. And we contracted with the architectural firm of Site Solutions to do that work. We completed the plan in September, or, and it was, the Recreation Advisory Committee had an opportunity to review it and recommend it on October the tenth. And we presented to the commissioners at a mini, mini retreat this fall, the entire plan. And at that time, the plan was tabled for further discussion. And I brought it back up again at the winter planning session and was asked to bring it back up for further discussion at this meeting. I'll be glad to answer any questions about it, or if you would like for me to go back into what's in the plan or how it was created, I'll be glad to do that as well.
Does anybody have any questions? I think one, one reason we held off as long as it is, was because Mr. Cattle was new on board, and we wanted to have, have him an opportunity to look into, to the plan. I think everybody else has had more than adequate time to, to look at it. So if you've got any questions at this point, Robert, please do so.
I don't have a question. I, I just have a statement to make. When the plan was first presented, Sarah was still on the board. Sarah and I objected to the plan at the time, because Iredell County, the largest city in the county, is Mooresville. All of our demographic projections show that the growth area is going to be Troutman. Yet the, the bulk of the, of the funds and parks to be built in this plan are, are to be done all north of, of those areas. I don't think that any of the, any of the recommendations of the plan are wrong. I just thought that it was void of adequately addressing the needs of the, of the, the, the largest population center in the county, and, and void of, of seeking to address the, the recreational needs for where the, where the future growth in the county is. I know that you need to have a plan in order to apply for grants. And so, so I expect that this plan will be approved. I also know that in order for this plan to be implemented, that it will take hundreds of thousands of dollars a year to be set aside to, to buy the land and, and have these facilities. We just saw that in order to keep two people from losing their job, it was going to take a hundred thousand dollars, and, and, and we couldn't even say yes to that. So, so I, I really don't think that the parks plan's going to be implemented until the economy turns around. Personally, I believe that's going to be years. So mine may be a symbolic opposition, just so that we remember when it does come up, and we do have money, and we do decide to build parks, that everybody remembers, that, that I still think that the, the, the plan, as it's written, is not wrong. It's just missing a few vital pieces, okay? So I still support what you're doing and what you're trying to do. I just think more should have been added for where the people live.
In fact, may I comment on that?
Yeah.
If it's any consolation, the city of Mooresville also has updated their Parks and Recreation Master Plan as well, and they cover a bulk of that population area. And we actually worked with them at the same time creating this plan, to see what was actually what they would be offering and what we were to offer in that area. So we felt like that it did cover those areas because of the municipality in that area as well, so...
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to point out that, you know, contrary to what some people say, you know, I don't hate children and I do like recreation. And the fact of the matter is, I was on the Board of Recreation when we built Stumpy Creek. And the fact remains, there is not any money for South Iredell, because South Iredell is the only part of the county that has a park, a county park. And if Stumpy Creek had not been built, we would not be talking about a twenty-three million, six fifty figure. We'd be talking about in excess of thirty million dollar figure. So the argument that we're not doing enough for what is in the southern end of the county does not have the weight that some would suggest, and for another reason. When we're through spending twenty-three million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know what people are going to say? Some of them? They're going to say, you haven't spent enough on recreation.
Right.
So to think you're going to placate people by spending enough money on anything, it's been my experience, you'll never arrive at, at that point. And so I think that while it's not an exhaustive plan for the long term, development of parks in the county is a start, and without a plan, you can't qualify for any grants. I'm in support of the plan. And thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Mr. Woody, does your plan not address the demographics of the whole county?
Yes, sir, it does. It does.
Okay. It leaves, it leaves the municipalities to tax, and the folks in the Mooresville area pay city tax and county tax. We're saying they're responsible for their, their county. They have to have city taxes be higher to take care of their recreational needs, so that their county tax recreational dollars can go to other places. That's, which we do, which we do that with law enforcement. They pay, you know, Iredell Sheriff's Department doesn't patrol, you know, the city estates from the town of Mooresville. They have to provide their own law enforcement. Kind of on top of that, and I guess by de facto, in a de facto type of way, they, they subsidize law enforcement for the rest of the county. This is just happening in recreation as well.
But you did work with Mooresville, look at what they were going to do with the recreation?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Just a reminder, there is nothing inherently fair about taxing anybody.
It's okay. Like I said, we're not going to be budgeting big amounts of money for it anyway. I, I don't need to die on the hill. Let's vote.
All right.
Well, there's our motion, then.
I make a motion, we approve the plan.
We won't argue very long. We'll just vote.
Yeah, we talked about it. We're blue in the face. I make a motion, we approve the plan, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made. We approve the plan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Oppose.
Motion carries four, zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Four to one.
Oh, excuse me, four to one. I can't count out of this side, anyway.
You're doing fine.
You know, first night back, y'all could have shown a little bit of compassion. All right, announcements and vacancies occurring on Board of Commissions. Mr. Vice-Chairman, do you read these announcements, please?
Yes, sir. Be glad to.
Thought I'd been promoted. That's all right.
Announcement bases occurring on Board...
He's already got it over here, so...
Go ahead.
You want to go ahead and do it?
Yeah, Mr. Vice-Chairman, go ahead.
Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, one announcement. Appointments to boards and commissions. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, five appointments.
Okay, do we hear anyone?
We have a nomination for anyone for the Adult Care Home Committee Advisory Committee?
That's all right, more.
Okay.
Hearing none. Mr. Chairman, all for motion, we table the nominations.
Motion's been made that we table the nominations. Any discussion? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries. Stateful Planning Board, ETJ, one appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I've been, again, but I can get a list of property owners from Phil Collins at the city, and I'm going down the list. And there's a bunch of them.
He's got all the job ahead of him.
I'm going to keep calling until I get somebody.
I guess based on that, let's just table this then to the, to the next meeting. All in favor?
Say aye.
Aye.
Nursing Home Advisory Committee, three appointments. And I believe we do have someone who would like to serve on that. Name is Miss Sherona Moore, is that correct?
Yes.
Five ten South Mulberry Street in Statesville. Five ten South Mulberry Street in Statesville. I'd like to nominate her for that, one of those positions. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I move that we accept Ms. Moore by acclamation. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Ms. Moore has been nominated and accepted. I Care Board of Directors, one appointment.
Did you miss animal grievance, can you?
Nominate Robert Gorley, Jr.
Who?
Robert Gorley.
Okay. Any other nominations? Because we've got one, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, all for a motion that we close the floor to nominations and appoint Mr. Gorley by acclamation.
Motion's been made. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. Animal Grievance Committee, two appointees.
Motion to table, Mr. Chair.
I think we got one for that. Mr. Chairman, I'll nominate Ms. DJ Lloyd.
Okay, yeah. Mr. Cattle nominates DJ Lloyd. Any other nominations? If not, I move the nomination to be closed and accept Ms. Lloyd by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Local Emergency Planning Committee, two appointees.
Nominate Kevin Ross and Tommy Cook.
Mr. Robertson nominates Kevin Ross and Tony Cook, is that right?
Actually, he should be Captain Kevin Ross.
Okay.
He does carry the title.
Any other nominations? If not, I move the nomination to be closed and accept these two by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. And unfinished business. Public comment period. If anyone in the audience wishes to speak, we give you opportunity to speak if you'd like to speak at this time. Okay? New business.
Mr. Chairman, I had one item of new business, and it was, it's actually relevant, and the discussion would have possibly prevented one of our items today. And in all fairness, I did call Mr. Mashburn and give him a heads up. I would like for our board to request that Mr. Mashburn kind of do, really do three things, or do the same thing but at three different levels. Sometimes in government, we do stupid things on purpose. The road to hell is paved with good intentions, and programs are started that we think are going to work out, or somebody thinks is a good idea. But the, in truth, or when it goes to get applied, it just, it doesn't work out the way that people thought that it would. And I would really like for our staff, and when I mean our staff, people all the way down to the, you know, somebody sitting in front of a keyboard, to look if there are any requirements or mandates that have been put on the county employees, either by some action that this board took, by a state requirement, or a federal requirement, where somebody could come back and make a pretty darn good case that either it's costing us a lot of money to comply, or to meet a requirement, and the benefit, or the certain, the benefit to the community just does not justify the cost. And then we take that information, and if it's within our, if it's within our authority that we revisit it and see if maybe we can release ourselves of any such commitment. And if it's something at the state level, that we might be able to ask the state to give us a waiver, if only, you know, for the duration of the economic downturn, but to give us a waiver from requirements. That case in point tonight was to inspect, you know, septic system pumps. You know, I had to support the motion because the law of the land says we ought to do it. And we've said, no, we're not going to do it, which, which actually, you know, I think probably, that's kind of the Boston Tea Party started, and it's not a bad thing to do, I guess. But I would really rather go first and question some of these things and say, you know what? You know, if we're required to, if we're required to do something that just costs a lot of money to comply with, and we don't get that much benefit, I don't mind raising that up to our legislators, and then selectively taking a stand where we think that legally or in the court of public opinion, that most people would side with us, not to comply and to take that money and to use it for something that is good, or to delay a tax increase, or to delay a fee increase. So in the form of a motion, I would like, if we could, to direct the county staff to do a review of county, state, and federal mandates that could be considered extreme, very expensive, with very little value, so that we could go in and start to ask to be relieved of these obligations, and preserve some of our limited funds for things that are actually important and do benefit the community. Is that simple enough?
That's your motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to table. With all due respect to the relevance and the merits of what you had to say, it's just been sprung on me, and I'd rather not make a decision based on one speech and five minutes of thought. So my motion is to table.
Okay.
Well, you have a pending motion on the floor, don't you, Mr. Chairman, from Commissioner Robertson?
We do, we have.
My motion would supersede that.
Yeah. Okay. We'll vote on the motion to table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Aye. All right. What was the count? I didn't hear it.
One and one. Yeah, we should have voted. That's right, we didn't vote. It would have been.
Do it again.
No do-overs.
No do-overs.
All right. Scott's motion is tabled.
I say no do-overs.
Scott's motion was to table the first motion made by Mr. Robertson. All in favor of?
Table and the motion.
Say aye.
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 Wait a minute.
I don't know what I'm voting on. I don't know what I'm voting on.
Take back my, I'm sorry. I was trying to.
An aye for an aye, Steve.
I support Mr. Robertson's motion.
Can we do this by show of hands?
Motion to table is defeated four to one. How about that?
Defeated four to one, will you agree?
Yeah.
Okay. Can we move them?
Yes, sir.
What was your statement?
Well, I was going to say by show of hands, because we were having a hard time deciphering what the vote was.
A hard time deciphering what we're voting on, so. Okay, I think what we're voting on is Mr. Robertson made a motion to ask staff to look into basically unfunded mandates by the state.
And federal government.
And federal government. Mr. Cattle, on the other hand, said.
Ourselves.
He would, ours, yeah. Mr. Cattle, on the other hand, said, no, that he wasn't prepared to vote that right this particular time, so he would like to, to, what did you say?
Table.
Table the motion. So, okay. Now, we're going to vote on Tablin Ken's motion.
Okay.
All in favor of Tablin Ken's motion, say aye.
I call this rubbing your nose in it.
All right. Oppose to Tablin Ken's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That motion was defeated.
Yes.
Okay.
Four to one.
All right.
I support Mr. Robertson's motion, it's much more reasonable position than mine. I'm about ready to make a motion, we succeed from the union, but go ahead.
That's been tried.
Here, here.
That has been tried.
I think it's in the state constitution, we can't, but I'm ready to amend.
All in favor of Mr. Robertson's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, like sign. Motion carries, five zero. Boy, y'all are difficult.
Mr. Chairman, I had some new business.
Okay.
Oh, I'd just been speaking with Mr. Pope, and he said there may be a way that, rather than making the Sheriff's Department come down here every time they want to do that business with the badge and the gun, there may be a way that he can work with Mr. Mashburn and come up with a way that they can just do that. And so I guess my motion is to ask them to discuss that and see if it can be done.
Well, can we just not do this as a directive and have them look into it?
If that's what y'all want to do, we don't need a motion at this point.
They'll look into it as a directive and report back to us.
Okay.
Because I'm not sure if we had a motion right now, anybody would know what it was.
Well, sometimes, I hate to muddle things even more, but sometimes they like to come up here and get their gun, and get the plaque, and the chairman gives them the plaque. I mean, can that be at their discretion?
I thought you were talking about the approval, not the presentation.
Yeah, this was an approval, and it seemed like, you know, every time they need an approval, even if the person who's getting the presentation, they're not here, but the, you know, they have to send a deputy or somebody here to do that. It just seemed to me that we could just approve the process in general, if possible, and if legal. But, yeah, certainly we want to do that.
They'll look into it if you will, please, get back with us. County manager's report.
Just a couple of items, Mr. Chairman, before we go into a closed session for economic development. Just your activity report is before you, and even though it's very slight, there was just a little bit of an upturn in some of our activity as far as the building industry goes for the month of February, which seems to coincide with a report that came out recently. But it's been very slight. Did want to make you aware of some actions that have been taken, that have taken place to date, as part of following up with the budget reductions that we discussed at the retreat. First of all, we have eliminated one position in the tax administrative, tax administration office. We've eliminated a contract in REVALVE, and have placed two of the inspectors that are now doing the work, that the contract work was, and basically that was in collecting field data for the reevaluation that we're undergoing right now. And we had contract employees there, and we eliminated those two and placed two inspectors into those positions. We've canceled the mowing contract, and we're doing that totally in-house now. That's saving about $70,000. The others that we've talked about is about $100,000, $15,000 in employee recognition. Not a tremendous amount of money there. Some reductions that we're looking to implement very soon would be a reduction in actually in service. One is in the library, reducing the library hours. Can save us, just by reducing it one hour per day, and then eliminates Sunday opening of the library, could save us over $150,000. There, we can reduce our overtime hopefully by about 15%. That's going to save us about $210,000. But we're still not where we need to be. And quite honestly, the only way that we're going to get where we need to be is when we start looking at reduction of employees or reducing salaries. One of the ideas that we've thought of, that I think makes real good sense, and I believe that you'll find, even though there's some opposition to it, pretty universal acceptance of it, and that would be where we would designate five unpaid leave days during the year. And those, that would save us almost $650,000 if we were able to do that. Again, I think that, and if we do it the way that we're thinking about doing it right now, which would be spread out over the year, and would actually be put in conjunction with a holiday that is already designated to be, where offices are designated to be closed, you would see some savings, some savings in energy, because the buildings would be closed for a longer period of time. Not, you know, we're not going to get a lot of money out of that, but we can get some out of that. Plus the fact it does give people an opportunity to have longer holidays and.
Okay, so it would be county wi, five county-wide, not holidays, unpaid leave.
Unpaid leave days. It'd be unpaid leave days, but they would be usually in conjunction with a holiday.
Agreed.
So that it would provide for maybe a longer weekend.
Right.
And that also would allow us some energy savings in doing it that way. Now, this would not apply to emergency services, except for administration and support in those services. The other thing that we're looking at, you know, we're going to have to reduce personnel. And this can come possibly through attrition. One of the things that we've done is look at the number of employees that are close to retirement, and maybe are not retiring because they're waiting for, you know, they can receive full benefit by retiring. And I know that some counties are offering some incentives, that as long as the incentive doesn't cost more than the savings, then it might be a viable way of going. So that's one of the things that we're looking at right now, and trying to put some numbers to that, so that we can estimate the number of employees that may go ahead. And I know this is something similar to what they did, I think, at Energy United a few years ago, and other businesses and industries do it a lot as well. But in order for us to save the kind of money that we're going to have to reduce the cost, the kind of money that we're going to have to reduce it, then we're going to have to start looking at reductions in payroll. And that's where the monies are going to be. Again, some of these, unless there are reasons that you can think of that we should not pursue these, this is the direction that we're planning to go right now. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention is, we recently received a letter from Dr. Kenny Miller, who is the executive director of Facilities and Planning with the Art of Statesville Schools. And as you're aware, that under North Carolina law, before a school can dispose of a piece of real estate, they have to give the county commissioners the right to first refusal on that. They have notified us that they are planning to occupy the new Cloverleaf and Cottle Creek schools, and the East Elementary, renovated East Elementary School in the next school year. And they are planning to dispose of the Ebenezer School, which I think most of you are probably familiar with where that is. I would, what I would like to do is to give us an opportunity to evaluate the use of that school for another public use. The last, some of the schools they're going to reuse with magnet schools or other programs that they're going to have. But the Ebenezer is one that they do plan to dispose of. And what we would like to do is an opportunity to evaluate that for future public use, future county use. And I think they would give us an opportunity to do that, but I wanted you to be aware that that is something that Tracy, especially with emergency services, I mean, it's ideally located for emergency services. Now, it may be more than we could possibly use, it may be budget-wise, it may be out of the question, but at least we'd like the opportunity to pursue evaluating it for that purpose. So unless you've got some problems with that, I'm not saying that we need to vote on that now, because obviously you need to see what we would come up with, what we would recommend. But unless you've got some problems with us pursuing it, we would like to go forward and do that.
I could see a lot of uses for that property county-wise, and its location, that close to interstate, and I think it'd be worth looking into. On a personal note, I'd like to say thank you to all the many people who have sent cards, and letters, and calls, and visits. I read every card, every letter, and I've got stacks of them, but I look forward every day to go in to the mail to get my. day to go in to the mail to get my cards. I do start my second week of chemo tomorrow. First week hadn't been something I've been real, more right home about, I can tell you that. But hopefully, the second week I'll, I've learned a little bit about it and maybe I'll be able to do a little better job fighting off than I did this week. But you never know how much you appreciate people until you've had something like this happen to you. And I've just got a more of appreciation of people now after seeing the responses from all over this county and surrounding counties and counties that I don't even know, didn't even know had any connection with me, like Wilson County and places like this that I got calls and letters from. So I do appreciate everything you've done and all your prayers. I do especially appreciate them. Now, we're going to enter into a closed session under GS 143 through 1811A for Economic Development. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, like a sign, we'll be back in a little while.
...